It's coming, vermin!
I remember this from my dreams. And I know I'm one step closer. Alone again. At least I'm in better company now.
Prepare yourselves, rats stink all over. Oh, here they come!
I hear their claws skittering on stone. Is it too much to ask that you keep up?
It stinks victory, huh? Enjoy it while it lasts! Get ready!
It thinks it's being sneaky.
Here they come!
This haven's faster than it looks. Not all cruelties are equal. Even amongst vermin. Draw the gunner's fire! I'm in the gunner's sights! Reach a boar! Rounding gun! The filthy rat gunner tries to keep up with me! Look out, rounding gun!
You showed us the player, but can you do it again?
Take your head down! One more dead rattling! We'll see how you do without my boar, shall we? In grace.
No rest for the wicked. Stay ready! Oh, here they come!
It's small, filthy, and noisy. Just like a dwarf. There's poison on the wind. Clover deer! Shot clear! Watch, I got you! Get clear! Breath carefully. I spy a clover deer. Don't you feel it? The weed rebels! Kill the vermin before it throws! No stomach for a fair fight gutter runner! Assassin rat fails miserably! That master done! Kill the vermin before it throws! I need help! I'm not alone. Lilith watches over me. Gas rat! Ammunition! Take all you can! Gas rat! Get out of the way, lumberfoot!
Still standing, I see. I approve, Soto.
Ammunition! Take all you can! Pale queen, take them all! Have they no sense of discipline? There's poison on the wind.
Oh, here they come!
They think we can't hear that clanking. Watch every shadow. Yes, the rattling's dead! More storm vermin! Is there no end to them? Let the black rat come! I've an arrow for him! Are you lost, mayflies? Where are you? Come, black rat! Taste steel! May this potion cure more than it causes! Come, black rat! Taste steel! A black rat approaches! More storm vermin! Is there no end to them? Bump it! That stench! Storm vermin! Another of these black furs comes to challenge me! A black rat! A challenge at last! Storm vermin! Come, black rat! Taste steel! More storm vermin! Is there no end to them? That stench! Storm vermin! Another of these black furs comes to challenge me! A black rat! A challenge at last! A black rat! A challenge at last! A black rat approaches! Let the black rat come! I've an arrow for him! Let the black rat come! I've an arrow for him! Beware the hook! Storm vermin! Let the black rat come! I've an arrow for him! Another of these black furs comes to challenge me! A black rat approaches! Storm vermin! I slain the rattling! That stench! Storm vermin! Come, black rat! Taste steel! More storm vermin! Is there no end to them? A black rat! A challenge at last! Storm vermin! A black rat approaches! Storm vermin! A black rat! A challenge at last! More storm vermin! Is there no end to them? Come, black rat! Taste steel! That stench! Storm vermin! Let the black rat come! I've an arrow for him! Another of these black furs comes to challenge me! A black rat approaches! Come, black rat! Taste steel! Another of these black furs comes to challenge me! Another of these black furs comes to challenge me! Storm vermin!
Want to bet for how long? No time to rest, slack jaws.
Potions! The breeze is acrid with orc powder.
Oh, here they come!
Take your head down! The gunner aims for me! You flunk it! Flank that contraption! The vermin gun's targeting me! The rat wants to shoot me dead! Rounding gun! Flank that contraption! I'm the one he's aiming for! Hell it! A black rat approaches! I'm their outlet target! More storm vermin! Is there no end to them? That stench! Storm vermin! Every step brings us closer to our goal. Taking fire from rounding gun! That stench! Storm vermin! Hear that? A rattling gun is close. Let the black rat come! I've an arrow for him! Black ball is a better shotgun, lads! The gunner's dead! A black rat! A challenge at last! I won't die like this! I don't need their help. Another of these black furs comes to challenge me! That stench! Storm vermin! That stench! Storm vermin! More storm vermin! Is there no end to them? There's a gutter runner about! Get the runner! Let the black rat come! I've an arrow for him! A vile stench won't save you, scryer rat! Watch out! Gas! Get clear! Don't you feel it? The weed rebels! Breath carefully. I spy a clover deer. Watch out! Gas! Come, black rat! Taste steel! They call these arrows! They'll have to do. Stop pondering off! Don't you recall what happened last time? Look out! Clover deer! That rat's dead! You think your hook can match my bull strangler? Are you lost, mayflies? Where are you?
Any second now!
A rat ogre stands to reach! Gas! A vile stench won't save you, scryer rat! Blow him to the size of it! A rat ogre stands to reach! Shot clear! Down that! Blackfire! No giving up now! For all you like, I'll bring you down! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! A rat ogre stands to reach! Rat ogre! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! For all you like, I'll bring you down! Draw the beast's attention! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Draw the beast's attention! Rat ogre! Me lilith, the size of it! For all you like, I'll bring you down! A rat ogre stands to reach! For all you like, I'll bring you down! Rat ogre! Blow him to the size of it! Rat ogre! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Destiny waits! Not for this move! A rat ogre stands to reach! Draw the beast's attention! Draw the beast's attention! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Blow him to the size of it! A rat ogre stands to reach! Draw the beast's attention! Me lilith, the size of it! Rat ogre! For all you like, I'll bring you down! Rat ogre! A rat ogre stands to reach! Draw the beast's attention!
I didn't fall asleep, so you weren't terrible, I guess.
Potions! Here! This will only take longer with you staring.
You hear that?
The darkness shines with oushing eyes. Is it too much to ask that you keep up? Ah! That potion smells of ignorance. Pale queen, take them all! Have they no sense of discipline? A black rat approaches! A black rat approaches! A black rat! A challenge at last! Storm vermin!
Eliminated! Not bad.
Potions!
You know the drill, be on guard! Oh, here they come!
Calm yourselves, lumberfoots. Another of these black furs comes to challenge me! Stay clear of it, pet! Talons! Oh, it heals better than it tastes! Blackfire! Draca's spite! The gunner aims for me! You flunk it! Alone again. At least I'm in better company now. I don't need their help. So many shots! Such poor aim! The filthy rat gunner tries to keep up with me! The vermin gun's targeting me! Storm vermin! The rat wants to shoot me dead! I'm the one he's aiming for! Hell it! Hush, cavalry! You've known worse than this. I'm in the gunner's sights! I'm their outlet target! Rounding gun! Rounding gun! Keep moving, lumberfoots! Our story is not yet finished. Another of these black furs comes to challenge me! Hear that? A rattling gun is close. Stop pondering off! Don't you recall what happened last time? I'm bound to fight this vermin! Come, black rat! Taste steel! Flank that contraption! So many shots! Such poor aim! Destiny waits! Not for this move! Black ball is a better shotgun, lads! Taking fire from rounding gun! The rattling's dead! Potion, here! There's a potion.
Don't forget to fill up on supplies! Oh, here they come!
We'll see how you do without my boar, shall we? In grace. Gas! Look out! Watch out, gas! Get clear! I'm not alone. Lilith watches over me. Globadere, down! Stand clear! Globadere! Don't you feel it? The weave rebels! Breathe carefully. I spy a globadere. Look out! Don't you feel it? The weave rebels! Get clear! One less stinking gas rat! Watch out, gas! Stand clear! Watch out, gas! Kill the vermin before it throws! Look out! Stand clear! Get clear! Gas! Stand back! It's going to explode! Don't you feel it? The weave rebels! There's a globadere nearby. Don't you feel it? The weave rebels! Meat weapon! It's going to explode!
No rest for the wicked! Stay ready!
Don't let it snare you! A thousand deaths are not enough for this hurt rat! Gas rat! Storm vermin! A black rat, a challenge at last! Is it too much to ask that you keep up? That's a globadere! That's a stench! Storm vermin! Stand clear! Gas rat! A black rat, a challenge at last! Gas! Look out! There's a globadere nearby! Get clear! Watch out, gas! A vile stench won't save you, scryer rat! Don't you feel it? The weave rebels! Blades in the shadows! Breathe carefully. I spy a globadere. I hit a gas rat! Get clear! A vile stench won't save you, scryer rat! There's poison on the wind! Stand clear! Look out! Kill the vermin before it throws! Globadere! Watch out, gas! Get your head down! Watch out, gas! Get clear! Come, black rat, taste steel! Let the black rat come! I've an arrow for him! No giving up now! Every step brings us closer to our goal! There's a globadere nearby! Gas rats, down! A black rat approaches! More storm vermin! Is there no end to them? Storm vermin! A black rat, a challenge at last! More storm vermin! Is there no end to them? Our story is not yet finished. Taking fire from rattling gun! Look out, rattling gun! One more dead rattling! Let the black rat come! I've an arrow for him! Another of these black furs comes to challenge me! Globadere! Don't you feel it? The weave rebels! I hit a gas rat! Get out of this path! Blind ball is a better shotgun, lads!
Taking victory, huh? Enjoy it while it lasts!
Here, ammunition! Are you lost, mayflies? Where are you?
No time to rest, slack jaws! Oh, here they come!
They've not given up? Not yet. Draw the gunner's fire! The gunner aims for me! You flank it! The burning gun's targeting me! I'm in the gunner's sights! Rounding gun! I'm the one he's aiming for! Talons! Rounding gun! The gunner's dead! The rat wants to shoot me dead! Black ball is a better shotgun, lads! That filthy rat gunner tries to keep up with me! Hear that? A rattling gun is close. Under our own targets! Draw the gunner's fire! Draw the gunner's fire! I'm a blade there, rat like! Fresh arrows are always welcome!
Supplies are here! Whether you deserve them or not.
Pale queen, take them all! Have they no sense of discipline? Ammunition! Rat ogre! Globadere! Alone again? At least I'm in better company now. A vile stench won't save you, scryer rat! Lily, the size of it! Globadere, down! How large do these vermin grow? For all you like, I'll bring you down! Rat! Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Rat ogre! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Rat ogre! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! Draw the beast's attention! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! For all you like, I'll bring you down! Lily, the size of it! Rat ogre! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Draw the beast's attention! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Lily, the size of it! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! For all you like, I'll bring you down! Rat ogre! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! Rat ogre! Rat ogre! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! Lily, the size of it! Draw the beast's attention! For all you like, I'll bring you down! Rat ogre! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! Lily, the size of it! Lily, the size of it! Draw the beast's attention! For all you like, I'll bring you down! Rat ogre! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! For all you like, I'll bring you down! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Lily, the size of it! Draw the beast's attention! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! For all you like, I'll bring you down! Lily, the size of it! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Draw the beast's attention! A rat ogre, stare to the beach! Lily, the size of it! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! That's... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! The false moon gives them courage. Boom! Stand clear!
Impossible to keep count on how many you've killed! Keep it up! You hear that? Oh, here they come!
A gunner approaches. I'm drawing the bow! I'm drawing the bow!